Good evening, everybody. So this is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council, and we are going into our presentation period for 5:30 tonight. And our first presentation tonight is going to be by John F. Kennedy's Memorial Foundation. This is going to be the Ophelia Project presentation, and Susan Francis is going to give that to us. He'll get you on it. Now try it.
My name is Susan Francis. I'm a resident in Palm Desert, and the reason I wanted to speak to you is because I run the Ophelia Project with the John F. Kennedy Memorial Foundation, and for years we have wanted to bring the Ophelia Project to Desert Hot Springs. And our plan is to launch in your schools in September, this coming September. And I wanted to come to you and let you know that that was what we wanted to do. Before you heard it in the grocery store, I wanted you to hear it from me. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the program. The Ophelia Project is a mentoring program for girls in middle schools and high schools. We've been doing this program for 22 years in the lower part of the valley. And we started in one school with five girls and three mentors, volunteer mentors. Today, we're in all three school districts, serving approximately 700 girls a year. Fifty-two hundred girls have gone through the program, and our biggest dream has been to get into Desert Hot Springs to complete our promise to the desert. We have met with the principals of your high school and your two middle schools. We...I brought with me tonight Peggy Mengele, who is the one who recruits and trains all of our volunteer members, so say hello. And also John Girardi, who's, I'm sure you all know him, and he's on the school board for Palm Springs, also came to lend his support tonight, so thank you, John, for that. The Ophelia Project, I want you to know all about it, but you didn't give me six hours to talk to you, right? Ask me questions.
All right, who wants to go first? I guess your pamphlet said...no, I'm joking. Ms. Pye here has a question.
What's important to me is the scan project so that the parents...
Okay, here's what the program looks like. We train volunteers to go into the schools to deliver the programming. The training is significant, and every volunteer has to be background-checked, fingerprinted, all of the background checks before they're allowed to go into the schools. Then the training is what is the program like? What happens in the program sessions? And that goes from what they can do, what they can't do, what they must always do, and what they must never do in the program. We work very closely with the school districts, the principals, all three superintendents, and we share with the school districts and the superintendents all of our curriculum and program content before the school year starts. Everything we're planning to do for the school year, they approve. In fact, we have a seat on our Board of Directors for each of the three superintendents, so they're always kept abreast of every plan that's being made with our minutes and our agendas. We get into the schools. We have 15 sessions in each school each year. So that means we start the end of September or early October, and we go through mid-May, and we do about two sessions per month. And in these 15 sessions, we cover a number of curriculum items. Now, we are not academic, we are soft skills, so we go in and support what the schools and what the districts are needing support in. We do get permission from the parents, of course, and the way the girls get into the program is the counselors refer the girls into the program. We don't know the girls, and we don't know the families, but the counselors do. And if the counselor says to us, "We want you to have these 25 girls in this middle school scenario," yes ma'am, or yes sir, we'll take those 25 girls. The counselor knows what kids would...could best use a helping hand from the community to stay engaged in school, to bring their grades up, to actually finish high school. Some kids are not expected to finish high school when they get into the Ophelia Project. We've had a tremendous success rate. The girls who have been in the program into their junior, senior year, we have 100% graduation rate. That is so amazing when they have such issues and challenges when they're in middle school in ninth grade, 10th grade. The girls also, if they don't like it, they don't have to stay, but once they've been in one or two sessions, they love it and they stay. We have a scholarship program. When they graduate from high school, we want them to go to college if that's what their wish is. We will help them with funding their college education. That's a whole lot of information in very few sentences, and I want to tell you whatever you want to know.
We don't have a lot of philanthropy in Desert Hot Springs, but if we...if there is somebody watching on TV and they wanted to help sponsor someone, what would...what would that look like? And do they just contact you directly? How do they...how would they do that?
If they want to know more about the Ophelia Project in a variety of ways, maybe...maybe they're a donor and they're looking for a way to support a nonprofit, that could be, or maybe they want to help some of these girls have the program in their lives. It could be that they want to be a mentor. It could be that they want to be on a committee, do some volunteer work. We have an art committee, a scholarship committee, tons of committees that we need help with. The biggest issue that we're dealing with between now and September is we cannot launch in any of your schools if we don't recruit the number of mentors that we need. Right now, we believe we need between 20 and 25 volunteer ladies who will go through all the background checks, go through all the training, and make the commitment to 15 sessions over the school year.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, thank you. You kind of hit the nail on the head with one of the questions I had. I first saw this in a profile that we at Advancing DHS did, which is a nonprofit that I...president of. I see one of my other board members out here today, too. So it's an amazing organization that you have, and I was really pleased that we were able to highlight it. People often talk about mentorship, and it's more focused towards young men, and you don't see a lot of mentoring programs for young girls, young women, and you need to have that. I worked closely, when I was in Seattle many years ago, with an outfit called the Seattle Girls School, which was a private charter school for girls, and they were always recruiting mentors. And it's not something that is very easy to do. And you kind of hit the nail on the head earlier. What I was going to ask you is that, you know, for you to get geared up for September, for a September launch, you need to have a number of mentors in the pipeline now getting trained. And so my urging is for anybody that is interested in this amazing program to reach out to you and to volunteer and go through that training process so that you can launch in September like we so want you to do. And I'm wondering if there's...if we can put a link to that on the city webpage on how to volunteer for Ophelia. I know it's on the Advancing DHS page, so the more ways we have to put this out, I think the better chance you have of getting volunteers. So you answered my question just a second ago, so I really don't have one, but it's a great organization, and we're looking forward to having you here.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Betts?
I just wanted to thank you for coming to Desert Hot Springs. Looks like a very good program, and I think we're very lucky to have you reaching out here like you are, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
One question you didn't ask...one question you didn't answer, the mayor. How do they get in touch with you?
Yes, there's two of us here, so either Susan Francis, that's me, or Peggy Mengele. And our phone number is 760-776-1600, and that number will be answered, and you can get to Susan or Peggy, and we will take you from there. We're also doing some sessions here in Desert Hot Springs that are informational sessions, where we've invited the public to come if they wish to hear more about the Ophelia Project, and we'll be planning some more of those. Maybe you'd be willing to put those on your website, too.
And you do have a webpage, and you're on Facebook and Instagram?
That's correct.
Awesome, so there's no excuses for them not being able to get ahold of you?
Absolutely none.
Anything else? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Our next item on the agenda tonight for presentations is the introduction of swearing-in of a new police officer, Chief Henson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Desert Hot Springs. Tonight, we're going to be swearing-in a new officer. This has become a habit. Unfortunately, we're getting close to our limit, so it's going to slow down here. Tonight, we're going to be introducing Officer Randall Budinsky. He has several individuals here that are attending his swearing-in. His wife, Sarah Budinsky, his aunt Betty King, parents-in-law Curtis and Cindy Seegrove, stepchildren Taylor and Ryan Hagan, brother and sister-in-law Jason and Lisa Seegrove, Officer Colby Peterson from Barstow PD, and Sarah Wainwright, who's a friend. Please welcome new Police Officer Randall Budinsky. Officer Budinsky was born in Torrance, California, and was raised in both Old Hickory, Tennessee, and Roy, Utah, where he attended Roy High School. He later played two seasons of arena football for the Utah Blazes. Officer Budinsky continued his education with the University of Phoenix, where he obtained his bachelor's degree with honors in criminal justice, with an emphasis in human services. In 2010, he moved from Old Hickory, Tennessee, to Rancho Cucamonga, California, where he currently resides with his wife and two children. Between 2011 and 2014, Officer Budinsky volunteered in his community as a football coach for the city's Pop Warner teams. He enjoyed coaching his son's team, as well as other teams in the league. In October of 2018, he began his future in law enforcement by attending the Extended Basic Police Academy at San Bernardino Valley College. He graduated second overall from the academy on October 26, 2019. Randall, why don't you come on up? Sarah?
You got your vest on? All right. Go for it. No pressure.
I know. And we practiced.
Okay, Officer...stand up here. Officer Randall Budinsky, come on over. You want to say a few words?
Well, first, appreciate the warm welcome to the city. I do appreciate the opportunity to work with every individual of the community, from children all the way to our elderly, as well as getting to know people by face, introducing myself in the community, and thank you to all the staff, chief of police, for believing in me to protect the city. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do the swearing-in now. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Officer Randall Budinsky, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Yes, sir.
That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
Yes, sir.
That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
And that's all the presentations we have tonight. We'll recess till 6 o'clock. Good evening, everybody. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council, and the City Council is serving as the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for February 18, 2020. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Pye?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith?
Present.
Mayor Mattis?
Present. So would you have one of our past local pastors here in the community, Kefiyah Shepherd, is going to give the invocation. As he comes forth, we're going to stand. We do have sad news here in Desert Hot Springs. Richard Cromwell has passed away. Longtime advocate of Desert Hot Springs. He, I think, for the last, I don't know how many years, lived in Mission Lakes, but was always an advocate for Desert Hot Springs. Served on the school board for Desert Hot Springs, served on Blue Ribbon Committee here in Desert Hot Springs. I think he was even a council member at one time and served on many committees, so...with that, we'll stand. We'll take a moment of silence, and then I'd ask that Reverend Shepherd give us the invocation.
God, before we proceed to the council meeting, we pray comfort for Mr. Cromwell's family and his friends and his colleagues. God, we pray that your spirit comfort the city of Desert Hot Springs as a giant has been called home. And so, God, we pray that his spirit remain alive, love for this city, and doing all that we could and we can to keep his memory alive, to keep this city growing and glowing as it should be and as it is. God, we pray for this meeting right now. We pray that you go ahead of us, God. We pray that a spirit of unity sweep across the dais on this evening so that we can make decisions that are better this city as you've called it to be. And, God, we just thank you just for community on tonight. We thank you, and we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Place your hand over your heart and join me in pledging to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Before we do that, does anybody would like to pull anything off the consent calendar? I don't hear anybody wanting to pull anything. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to items five, six, or seven? I see nobody coming forth.
Mr. Mayor? If I could just note, item number five, which is the minutes that you approve as corrected to reflect that written comments were submitted for particular items.
Okay. Ms. Pye?
That was it.
That was it? Okay. All right, with that, I'll accept a motion.
Motion approving the minutes...oh, the agenda, sorry, with the correction to the minutes under item five.
No other comments in the queue, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
At this time, we'll go to public comments. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council cannot take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council, shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. Our first comment is Jessica Gilbert, followed by Florence Martin.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Rotary's...our next month's Big Heart Awards. Can you hear me better?
Is it on? Now try it.
Hi.
There we go.
Thanks. Rotary's having our fourth annual Big Heart Awards, and I'd just like to urge everyone to try to attend. It'll be at Miracle Springs at 5:00 PM. We have lots of prizes, silent auction items, and one of our youngest speakers is going to be Chloe, who is our mayor's daughter. She's speaking on behalf of Early Act. We have our kids there, they're going to all be helping, and we're just here to raise awareness of how much the principals and teachers and all the police officers and fire department, everything that people do in this community, and we'd just like to give them something special to give back for what they've given to our youth and to our community. So March 5, and I put flyers at the front so anyone can take them with them. Okeydoke, thanks.
Awesome, thank you, Jessica. Florence Martin, followed by Ted Meyerhoff? Hoffen? I don't know why I always stop your name halfway through, Ted, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Florence Martin, resident of Desert Hot Springs since 2006. Tonight, I'm here representing the Public Safety Commission to give you a brief update. At our last meeting on February 13, new officers were selected for the upcoming year. Commissioner Lee Eastman was selected as chair, and I am now vice chair. Special recognition for Donna Lozano for her leadership as chair during this last year. Another thing, we also had a very interesting presentation by Nicole Sanchez Garcia, who is a cadet at the High School Public Safety Academy. All too often, we hear negative stories in media concerning the youth of today. It is indeed refreshing to have young people working hard to make the future brighter and safer. Hats off to Nicole and the other cadets. Now, if you're not familiar with the Public Safety Academy, it is a four-year commitment program for the students interested in a career in criminal justice, crime scene investigation, firefighting, and/or emergency medical services. It is a nonprofit co-ed public high school program that began in 2011 for students in from ninth to 12th grade, and here's Nicole.
Hi. Can you guys hear me good? Okay. So I just wanted to be here to be able to invite you guys, or you all personally, to invite you to the Career Technical Education and Groundbreaking Ceremony that we're going to be having. It's a building for Public Safety Academy and the Real Academy, and I mean, I did leave some flyers here. I don't know if they have them. Do you guys have the flyers? Or...okay, thank you. So I just want to invite you guys. It's going to be on March 27, and it begins at 4:00 PM.
Where at exactly?
Desert Hot Springs High School.
So we're...to get familiar with it, I know where the academy is because my daughter's in it, but for these guys to find their way there, you want them to...is it the back of the school, front of the school? What's the easiest way to?
Well, it's going to be on the west side of the high school mid-block on the Golden Eagle Lane.
Kind of towards the back, right?
Yeah, towards the back.
The back parking lot there, okay.
And do you guys have any questions that you guys would like to ask me?
We'll get the flyers from you, and if they have any questions, they can contact you through there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out. Ted Meyerhoffen?
Mayor Mattis, council members, and city staff, I apologize for not finishing filling out the card there. It's a short crowd here.
No worries.
I'd like to speak to you tonight about some of the problems that I've seen over the years with commissions. As you know, I was the chairman for the Parks Commission back in 2000, and currently serving as a commissioner on the Public Safety Commission, and congratulations to Chairman Eastman and Vice Chair Martin, and thank you for that lovely presentation you gave there, Vice Chair Martin. Some of the...I want to tell you, when I was the chairman for the Parks Commission, we helped to get the skateboard park going. There was a kind of a power play there, who should be the chair and not should be the chair. I wanted the kids in the Christmas parade, so I thought it'd be great if we had the Parks Commission in the parade. They voted no for it, so I went out on my own, and probably shouldn't have done that, but it was nothing illegal about it, so I went out on my own, but got the kids in the Christmas parade. Then here, three of the Parks Commissioners got together and informed me about three days before the parade that they had a banner representing the Parks Commission. So therefore, they violated the Browns Act by getting together...or Brown Act by getting together to do that. And then we've had other problems with the other commissions. So I got to thinking about this. What is the biggest problems that our commissions have? Number one is I learned a lesson there about going outside of the commission when the commission already voted on something. When the commissions violate the Brown Act, as they did in this case, it was wonderful that I got my way, that Parks Commission was in the parade, but what happened was one of the skateboards got loose, hit a lady in the leg, and there was that big banner that said Parks Commission. After that, the commission kind of fell apart, and they were pretty well-stayed the same commissioners, and it was switched over to the CCAC. Had there been some kind of accountability for following the Brown Act, if there'd been some kind of rotation as much like the council does with the mayor, mayor pro tem, every commissioner would know that they would have a two-year seat. In two years, I should say in two years, they would have to be on the commission before they could become the chair or the vice chair. Every commissioner would know what was expected, who was in line next, and it would keep all the fighting and vicarion out of who is supposed to be the chair, and I didn't get it, or you didn't get it, and that kind of thing. I was in another meeting where the city attorney was there.
We're running out of time.
Okay. And the city attorney was there, and not to back and forth, but all of a sudden, before the city attorney left, they were doing it. So where's the accountability? Who's watching over the commissions? We need to work on that.
Thank you very much. I have no other comments in the queue. Would anybody like to speak in public comments? This is the final call. I see nobody coming forth. We'll close public comments at this time, and move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor. Our Public Works Director, Danny Porres, has a few updates for us regarding Palm Drive, traffic signals, and lighting at the Kmart Center.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick update, the Palm Drive ATP Cycle III, which is the current project that is going from Camino Aventura to Two Bunch Palms. We have met with the contractor and have completed several different testings, and we are finalizing the next steps and the schedule of the next steps prior to striping. As soon as we get those final steps in the schedule, we'll definitely present those. The Palm Drive Phase II project, the contracts have been executed. We have completed our pre-con. We completed all...we actually met with all utilities, and everything is moving forward. We have a tentative start date of the March 9, which is the second week of March. That one will be completed in three segments. We'll be doing one segment at a time, so the traffic impacts will be reduced, and the actual delays will be reduced, and completed a little bit more timely fashion. The traffic signals, we also have ordered all the traffic signal poles for Palm and Desert View and for Pearson and Choya. We had an initial estimated 21-week manufacturer lead time. We are getting a final delivery time. We hope that we get them a little bit sooner. Last time, we were delayed a little bit further, but it looks like this time they're moving a little bit faster, so we are being hopeful of that. The Kmart Shopping Center, over the weekend, we got reports that the Kmart parking lights were off. We have contacted the property owners. Unfortunately, there has been some change of property ownership, and it's been a little bit difficult tracking them down. We were able to get ahold of them, and they have a call electrician who fixed it. In the meantime, we have already installed some temporary lights in the parking lot for safety until we can completely and permanently solve the lighting issue. But at least for tonight and the rest of the week, we will have the temp lights up and up and running. Thank you.
Mr. Betts had a question for you, Mr. Porres.
Yeah, the, you know, there's been considerable interest in the section of Palm Drive that's a little bumpy, and you said something's going to be done prior to striping.
Correct.
There's so much curiosity on this one and conversation, what's going to be done prior to striping?
We don't have the final steps, but it would be some type of new asphalt. That's exactly what it is. A final product before striping. We're not going to proceed until the asphalt's completely...
Really quickly, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in here really quickly. The road...that stretch of road is going to be redone, and so what Danny is trying to say without saying it, because we're still working with the contractor, is that we're finalizing the steps on how that's going to be redone. So the community, the council can rest assured that that portion of the road will be redone per the terms of the contract.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. I'm just...I know you guys got that well in hand and get that sorted out. The other thing I heard just now was the shopping center changed ownership?
Yes, well, at least the previous content that we had from the previous ownership is no longer the maintenance person.
Well, it might be difficult, unfortunate news regarding getting the lights fixed, but I'm thinking it might be good news.
I don't think it's a great news.
I don't know the details of the ownership. I didn't know that the maintenance staffing has changed, so...
I heard that the Kmart Corporation is done and they sold it back to Sears Holding, and that's kind of a rumor. Please don't take me to think, but I don't think it's as good a news as you were hoping, so...
All right, you know, sorry, yours per cup there, so...thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other...anything else from city managers?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, move on to Councilmember comments. Who wants to go first tonight? Ms. Pye, you're in first.
This is regarding the Airport Commission. It is called the International Palm Springs Airport, but it's not an International Palm Springs Airport. However, there is a proposal, which is said it's a long-term proposal to have international flights come in, and it's not that easy. So, the first thing that... At the next Airport Commission meeting, there will be a motion to have someone study it and find out if it's long-term or if it's short-term. But then, there's other things that have to be focused on, on that also. But the Commission is not going to know until the analysis is done whether it's going to be short-term, which could be more than five years, or if it's going to be less than long-term, and that's it.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some sad news regarding Richard Cromwell. I was fortunate to meet him a couple of three years ago when I first moved to town, and we worked on a couple of political campaigns together. Such a generous, wonderful man who loved this city, and he will be sorely missed, say the least. Wanted to congratulate the Convention and Visitors Bureau, who won first place in the Poppy Awards, which is sort of like the Oscars for tourism marketing. We beat out San Francisco and San Diego for first place in overall brand identity for the Find Your Oasis Plan here, which just shows you how effective and how good the marketing program that CVB does is. Also attended the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission in addition to purchasing and conserving another couple of very large parcels near Desert Hot Springs, protecting them from future development and preserving them. I'm really happy to announce that we approved construction of a new trailhead over in Long Canyon. It's going to have a restroom, parking spaces, signage, as well as trail maps and improvements. And as the name says, it's Long Canyon, so it's very long. It's a 12-mile hike all the way up, but you'll be able to walk all the way up and end up in Yucca Valley. And it cuts through a corner of Joshua Tree National Park, so it'll show up on the Joshua Tree maps as well, which will draw some more additional tourists to here. So, it's 12 miles one way, 24 if you do it round trip. And there'll be another trailhead that we're putting in up there in Joshua Tree. And the added signage along our Long Canyon and also through Palm, directing people to the trailhead, will also bring, I think, a lot more tourism out here, which we all hope will reduce the amount of illegal dumping and target shooting that's going on up in Long Canyon. More traffic up there means people can't get away with stuff, dumping trash, shooting littering, things like that. Construction is set to start in May. Should take a couple of months, so it'll be ready for tourism season next year. So, excited about that. That's all I've got.
Mr. Griffith?
I attended the SEVAG Energy and Economic Resources Committee. One of the things that they brought forward is the discussion of regional energy networks. Currently, we are in what's called a regional energy network. It is a SoCal REN, and everybody pays for these programs on their utility bills. And what it is, is they get together and they fund a lot of retro-energy-saving things with cities. I know Rancho Mirage was one that benefited. But what we've discovered is that the majority of the work is done over in the LA area. So, people in Riverside County, San Bernardino County, and Coachella Valley are actually lacking in the return on their investment. So, the SEVAG is talking about starting our own regional energy network called the Inland Empire REN. It would be in conjunction with Western Riverside Coalition of Governments, as well as San Bernardino Coalition of Governments. So, it's... More of that will be coming. You'll hear more about this, but I just want to let everybody know that this is the tentative stuff that's just starting now, and you'll hear more in the future. The hope is to bring more of that money back to our area so that we can benefit from the fees that we're paying on our bills. And that was it.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Public Safety Committee meeting. Had a presentation on search and rescue, which was actually quite interesting. And then, had a presentation on the county's efforts to address coronavirus as people are coming in from China. Attended Southern California Association of Governments, the CEHD Committee. And that focused on mechanisms for keeping low- and moderate-income home housing that's presently in stock from reverting on to private market-rate homes. And the gist of that is that there's a covenant on the property when it gets... First gets built, and then, as that covenant expires, you'll have a large apartment building that is now going to go to market rate. And the problem becomes is you have this low-income housing, or low- and moderate-income housing, at $600 a month, jumping up to $1,500 a month, and a whole bunch of people complaining. And so, they're investigating, trying to figure out how they can get public resources to compensate the original owner so that they can keep it as subsidized or low-income housing. Question I had is, rather than, you know, doing something to help the developer, why not do something to help the renters and get them entitled to their own property? So, I don't know. I'm starting to push that one, we'll see. Attended ribbon-cutting at the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. It was a real eye-opener. It was the Anderson's Children Foundation was dedicating a playground. And, you know, it doesn't seem like a big deal. I mean, well, kids, it's great to have a playground. But the... What's interesting was to get the background on these kids. They're all from, you know, very tragic circumstances. Mother homeless for one reason or another. And so, I got to take a tour, and it was very interesting. Actually, got to go into the women's section, just, you know, to see what those facilities were like for the children. And every time you walk in, you know, I was the only man on the tour, and they go, "There's a man in the house." And, you know, it was just, it was a very normal thing to call out. But it's shocking, you know, to see, you know, in every room you go into, that was what was announced. And it's very segregated, and it's for good reason. But anyhow, it was quite an experience. And I'll tell you, Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, after I got a full tour, everything they're doing down there, fabulous organization. Really, really impressed. Let's see what we got here. Couple of items here. The tour to Palm Springs came through our city, and it was an expanded run. I want to thank staff for the effort and the energy that they put into, you know, getting our city a little more involved in that project. They came all the way up to the top of Worsley, and then made a run down Indian, and I think there was enough police presence. I would have loved to have seen a banner out there that said, you know, "Welcome to Desert Hot Springs," because you got 6,000 riders from all over the area. There were professors from the University of Utah. You had the San Bernardino sheriffs. You had people from Washington. Of course, I'm out there while they're in Desert Hot Springs going, "Oh, welcome to Desert Hot Springs, welcome to Desert Hot Springs. It would've been easier if we had a banner." And, you know, that's just a nuanced thing. Don't dig on anybody for missing a banner. I wouldn't expect you to get that. But I would think next year, as we, you know, look at this, is that maybe the Council would take this up and see, you know, doing a budget, how much effort, you know, give staff some direction. I'd like to see that come back sooner than later. We've just got a tremendous opportunity. When you have 6,000 people coming through your city, and you can showcase it. I mean, these people have means. They can travel, spend a weekend. I guess they got six or $10,000 bikes, I don't know how much they were. And it's just, it's a really good opportunity for very little investment. And I kind of think, you know, where Palm Springs was years and years ago, before Sonny Bono started to, you know, say, "Hey, we can make this place something more than just a sleepy little village, you know, put the stars on the sidewalks, and got people involved." And, you know, it's quite a busy, active place now. And I think Desert Hot Springs, if we follow a lead like Sonny Bono had, can do some of those same things, and here, we've got this opportunity. So, I understand it's up to the Council to do that, but I would sure like to see that get going. I had way more on that, but I'll leave it at that. The couple of items that came up for discussion, I think it's something I have staff to bring back to the Council, is, you know, you have a shopkeeper who wants to put his goods out in front of his place of business to say, "Hi, look what I got." You know, maybe it's a company, a business selling baby strollers. You know, "Baby strollers are us." And so, they want to put their baby strollers out on the front sidewalk. So, when people drive by, they go, "Oh, baby strollers," or whatever it is, the thrift stores, or Angel View, any of those places. And apparently, there's something in the code that says sidewalk sales aren't legal. And if you notice, that some of these stores that used to regularly put stuff out are now keeping it in. So, anyhow, I think that's coming to the Council. I've asked that something get done to bring that off. Somebody here joined me in figuring out, as a city, do we want to allow that or not allow that? And I don't want to get into a bunch of discussion on that one, except that, you know, one school of thought is, "Wow, look, busy, vibrant city." And the other school of thought is, "No, we're going to keep these sidewalks clear. Just keep everything tucked in and buttoned up." And anyhow... There's been just a lot of discussions on issues related to the homelessness, you know, particularly as it's impacting our city. The cities everywhere are going through that. We've had, you know, more and more, like LA-style tents showing up in different places. And it's, you know, I've had people call and say, "Well, why do we have to allow this?" And it's just not as simple as go and move somebody out. You know, there's state requirements and legal requirements that you just can't go and say, "Hey, give you the boot and move on." So, anyhow, that's an issue going on. Last couple of things. We have a new restaurant in town, Taste of India. And I don't know if anybody's been there, but it's fantastic. And I'm not trying to give a plug for Taste of India. I'm trying to give a plug for city staff and Luke Rainey. I got a call from them and said, "Hey, we want to open, but we can't." So, I called down to Luke, and I say, "Well, is there anything here in the city holding it up?" And he said, "No, no." So, I called their back and said, "Well, what's going on? I don't understand." She says, "Well, the Department of Health said it's going to be another six weeks before we can open." And, you know, they've just had paperwork, they're backlogged. So, I mentioned that to Luke, and I called down there and said, "Hey, let's, you know, if there's something you can do to move that paperwork along." And Luke went a little extra distance on that when he actually took a trip down to the office and explained to him, "This place is really important to us. Can we get it opened up?" And so, I just don't want to commend staff or, you know, sometimes they sit there and say, "Well, what's all this paperwork that we got to deal with? And why are we holding things up?" "Well, here's a perfect example." Or they got... I think they got somewhere open probably five weeks earlier than it would have been. And, you know, we've got people, if you look at social media, people from all over the valley, somebody from Rancho Mirage, somebody from Palm Springs, saying, "Where is this place located? They've heard about it. The food really is fabulous." And the last thing I want to say is, there'll be a lot said about Richard Cromwell. He just... He touched everywhere. Anybody who's been around here for a long time knows that he got involved in a lot of different things. And it always struck his, here's a guy getting involved because he wanted to make things better. And there'll be so much said about him. I can just speak to Sunline. I'm sitting on the board down there, have for a while now. And I don't know if people realize, but there's 18 hydrogen-fuel cell buses. They're zero-emission buses that are part of that fleet every day, running through the valley. And it was Richard Cromwell years and years ago, when he was General Manager down there, who said, "We got to get away from diesel and get on to clean CNG." Well, we're phasing out CNG, but I just talked to the Executive Director down there, the CEO, Lauren Skyver, gave her the news, and she says, "Wow, he made such an impact on this agency." So, you know, condolences to the family. And Richard, thank you for total dedication to just everything you did that was just selfish, selfless, selfless. And all right, that's it. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's all I got. Thank you.
I didn't have a lot of meetings the last two weeks. It's... A lot of things are packed into January because everybody comes back from the holidays. So, most of my meetings were in January towards the end, and most of the committees take the month of February off, and we don't start back up till March. So, didn't have a lot in February. Did have a few meetings in the office. Was able to play in the Food Now Golf Tournament, and they raised quite a bit of money. As you know, Food Now's our local food pantry here in Desert Hot Springs, feeding over 500 families a week. So, that was nice to do that. The Women's Club event's coming up in... What's the date on that? Do you guys remember?
March the 7th.
March the 7th?
Yes.
And then, the Big Heart Awards are again on March 5th. So, lots of organizations to support here in Desert Hot Springs. Rotary and the Women's Club really support our youth and our community with other things. And then, Food Now is always supporting the hungry in our community. So, if you can give a little... We always forget about that after the holidays, but that's the places to give. And do my wife, my beautiful wife. Three years married, six years together. I don't know why she's still with me, but she says I'm the love of her life, so she's the love of mine. So, happy anniversary today. I know I'm working, but tomorrow night, we're going to dinner. All right. We're going to move on to our huge agenda tonight, both items. Our first item's going to be 2019 ATP Safety Program Projects Engineering Design and Reimbursement Agreement. And before we get into that, Mr. Betts has a recusal.
Yeah, you know, sometimes there's something called a citywide exception, and I thought I might be able to employ that one for this. But I talked to the City Attorney, and she says, "No, this thing runs right past your hair salon and right past your house, and there's a rule that if anything is within 500 feet of your property, you need to recuse." So, that's what I'm going to do.
Okay. As soon as he's off the dais, Mr. Porres, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. The items regarding the 2019 ATP Safety Program Projects, the engineering design, and the reimbursement agreements. In 2017, SEVAG Executive Committee approved the 2017 Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Program, where they allocated over $10 million for bicycle and safety improvement projects. What that meant was, they allocated $10 million of the regional funding for local cities where they would pay for the construction costs of projects that would improve bicycle pedestrian safety. They asked different cities to submit any project applications. At that point, the City of Desert Hot Springs submitted for three projects that we are currently completing or are in the process in construction. We... The City of Desert Hot Springs received over $2 million of the $10 million. Those projects include the traffic signal at Palm and Camino Ventura, the traffic signal at Palm and Desert View, and Pearson and Choya, and the Palm Drive Street Lighting and Pedestrian Improvement Project that's about to begin in March. During the last few years, there's been a grant opportunity called the Active Transportation Program, ATP, where funds become available. It's a very competitive program. It's administered through the state, in which all counties and cities are eligible to apply. The last few years, the city has applied, and we've been successful in receiving those grants. In Cycle III, which was three years ago, the city received $772,000, which is the ATP Cycle III project that we're currently completing for the Palm Drive Bicycle Pedestrian Improvement Project from Camino Ventura to Tubunch. Last year, we applied and were awarded the Cycle IV Project, which is 1.3 million of ATP funds for the Hacienda Improvement Project, which extends from West Drive to Foxdale, and is currently in design. And in June of 2019, the SEVAG Executive Committee has voted to work with the cities, and instead of using the 2019 Bicycle and Safety Program for infrastructure, they want to allocate those funding to use them for completing the design portion of any future projects for those Cycle V funding cycle. So, what that does is, it's extremely competitive. When you apply for a project, it gets scored based on, is your project ready as one of them? When are you going to be able to complete it? Is it designed? Do you need funding for design? Do you need funding for design, construction, only construction? And it comes down to half a point where you would win either from $10 million to zero. We're very lucky, and we have one, but it's going to pretty much that competitiveness. In order to be more competitive around the entire state, if we are able to fund the engineering portion, that gives us a bigger edge over other cities that don't have that ready, not only for this cycle, but for maybe future cycles, and for any other grant opportunity that we have out there. I'll give you another example. Every two years, we have a Bicycle SBA 21. We don't have the project design. We don't have any projects that are designed, so we're kind of catching up. If we're able to complete the design, all we're applying is for construction funding, which really, really makes a project shovel-ready and very enticing for other agencies to fund them. So, in June, SEVAG Executive Committee voted unanimously to allocate the 2019 Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Program funding to complete the engineering design for ATP projects around the Coachella Valley. There are certain criteria. Some of the criteria was, it was emphasized to be multi-jurisdictional. There were certain criteria. Some of the criteria was, it was emphasized to be multi-jurisdictional. Each project was to be estimated a minimum of $1.5 million each. They would be funded through 75% regional funds and 25% local funds. They must be part of the TPPS program that we have here in the Coachella Valley, and it must be a, obviously, bicycle pedestrian safety project that qualifies through Measure A. With the criteria, the City of Desert Hot Springs submitted three projects. One was the project for Palm Drive Improvements, which would extend from Pearson to Mission Lakes. Those improvements included installation of missing sidewalks, adding additional curb ramps, driveway approaches that meet ADA guidelines, installing raised medians at Palm and Eighth, adding new buffered bike lanes, new streetlights, and performing a multi-way stop analysis at Palm Drive and 12th Avenue. Also, additional pedestrians bicycle signages throughout the entire project. That project was estimated to cost $147,700 to complete the design. The second project was the Palm Drive Improvement Project, which extends from I, from the Comino Ventura intersection all the way to the I-10 corridor or other, actually, all the way down to the I-10. This will also install missing, missing segments of sidewalk, extend existing curb ramps, driveway approaches to meet ADA guidelines, new buffered bike lanes, new streetlights, and additional pedestrian bicycle safety signages. The cost of designing that project was estimated at $192,040. And then the third project was the CV Link Desert Hot Springs Extension Project, which will establish a pathway for pedestrians, bikes, and low-speed electric vehicles to travel from the Palm Springs area of Ginautree all the way across through Palm Drive, through Mission Lakes, back to Llano Morongo, to Dillon, and back around through Palm Drive. It will be narrowing some travel lanes. It'll be installing new streetlights and it'll have additional pedestrian bicycle safety signages. The design of that one is estimated to be $986,260. Based on those three projects, SEVAG received from the City of Desert Hot Springs and other cities, SEVAG reviewed them and submitted or sent out a request for qualifications for engineering firms to apply and to submit their, their proposals. There were 13 submittals received. Out of those 13 submittals, they were sent out to various local agencies to score them based on our criterias that were matching our city needs. From those 13, five were interviewed, and at the end, there were only three selected as the top firms to complete the design of all the regional projects. In September, the SEVAG Executive Committee approved the three projects that were submitted by the city and also those three firms to complete the design for the City of La Quinta, Indio, Cathedral City, and Desert Hot Springs. Those three companies were Albert A. Webb and Associates, KOA, and Ominous Incorporated. The SEVAG Executive Committee also approved a reimbursement agreement of an amount not to exceed 75%. In essence, I know it's a lot of information, they approved three firms to complete all the design work for all the regional projects, and SEVAG would refund or reimburse 75% of the entire design cost, and the local cities would pay 25%. Based on that, the City of Desert Hot Springs was estimated to cost 1.3, $1,321,000 to complete the three design, the design of the three projects, in which SEVAG would fund 75%, which is equal to $990,750. The City of Desert Hot Springs local share would be equal $330,250. And the, the firm that was selected by the city was Ominous Incorporated. The City of Desert Hot Springs has previously worked on multiple engineering design projects with Ominous, and we have satisfied with their engineering design performance. They are very familiar with our Palm, with our Palm Drive projects that we've currently completed and are very familiar with our design standards and our needs. Based on the scoring, interviews, and our past performance in the city, staff is recommending the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement between the City of Desert Hot Springs and Ominous Incorporated for the design of the 2019 ATP Safety Program Projects in an amount not to exceed $1.1,321,000. Also, based on the estimates provided and SEVAG Executive Committee approvals, staff is recommending city council authorize the city manager to execute a reimbursement agreement between the City of Desert Hot Springs and SEVAG for the engineering design of the 2019 ATP Safety Program Projects for a total amount of $1.1,321,000, in which 75% of the regional funds, other regional share would equal $990,750, and the City of Desert Hot Springs local share would equal $330,250. And this is also allowing some substantive changes to be made by the city manager and city attorney as they deem appropriate to the agreement itself. You have the proposals that were submitted as our application to the SEVAG Executive Committee on page 75, and you also have the three proposals by Ominous on page 45, 57, and 67 in your packets. There are some exhibits showing, and we also have representative here from SEVAG and from Ominous, and I'll gladly answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. A very thorough report. Thank you, Mr. Porras. Is there any questions? You got your answer?
Yep.
Okay, good. Ms. Pye?
I move staff recommendation one.
Ms. Pye has moved staff recommendation one and two. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this? Nobody stepping forward? I will close the public comments and go to a vote. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you for attending tonight, gentlemen. Mr. Betts back in the room? All right, item number four is the Palm Springs International Airport Commission nomination. Mr. Soriano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So council member Pye's term on the Airport Commission expires on the 29th of this month. Therefore, this item is before you. This is a little different than the other council member assignments to committees. So the Palm Springs Municipal Code provides that the council's action this evening would be to nominate someone to serve on the Airport Commission. That'll subsequently go before the Palm Springs City Council, who will make the appointment. With that, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Does anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Betts?
Yeah, is the proper time. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilwoman Jan Pye. Is it Mayor Potem right now?
It's Councilwoman.
No.
Oh, okay.
Don't upset her again. She just, she just started smiling again after a year.
I didn't want to get it wrong. To nominate Councilwoman Jan Pye to serve on the Palm Springs Airport Commission, with that being our council recommendation to the Palm Springs City Council.
Here, is there a second to that? Ms. Pye, you have a comment?
I just, I just wanted to say Palm Springs is changing its commission, and one of the things that they're asking for is for meetings, 5:30 or 6:00, so that more people can attend them. However, they are allowing commissions to question that or ask for a different suggestion. And the Airport Commission is asking to stay at 8 o'clock in the morning because there are consultants that are called in from various groups. And if we have them at 6 o'clock, then the consultant's calling in at 9 o'clock. So that's going to be submitted to the council. That's it.
So again, this is a little unusual. We nominate a member of our council to be voted on by the Palm Springs City Council to sit on that commission, as they've opened it up to cities within the Coachella Valley. So our, there's a motion to nominate Councilmember Pye, and a second by Mr. Gardner. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Future agenda items can be discussed with the city manager's office. Anybody that did not get to speak at the beginning in public comments would like to speak now? See nobody coming forth. Our next city council meeting will be March 3rd here at 6 o'clock. Presentation's at 5:30 and possible closed session before that. Have a good evening. Well, that was quick.